Ken, can you say something?
Yeah.
Hello.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, everyone.
Alright, everyone said hi to you.
Okay. Who's everybody? Can you just read off who's there?
Alright, the attendants? No, I don't think we can do that, but I'll give you the names, uh, I'll give out the names of the speaker as they come up to speak, okay?
Okay.
We have eighteen needs.
Oh, okay. Where is, where, where is the open session before we go to closed session?
Yes, sir. I haven't called the meeting to order yet. I just called it.
Okay, okay. I follow. I know where we're at, okay.
Okay.
Say yes.
Alright. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'd like to call to order the, uh, special meeting of the Board of Temple City, uh, sorry, the Board of Education's Temple City Unified School District. It is now, uh, four oh two, uh, Fe- February fourteenth, two thousand fourteen. Uh, all members are present here. Member Nolberg is, uh, joining us via telephone. Okay. So... Uh, I guess I'm in the pledge allegiance. Everyone please rise. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, we have a number of, uh, requests here for, to speak, so I will take them in the order that I have up here. And the first person is Scott Wardlaw.
Okay, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, before you continue, let me just, just say I have a copy of the, uh, special meeting that was delivered, uh, yesterday, faxed over. Uh, I'm in room eighty-seven at, uh, Garden Press. The door is closed and I'm on the phone. Just for the record.
The door needs to be opened.
Okay. Oh, okay, well, okay, I'll open it.
Because we're, we're still in, we're in public, uh, we're in public session part of the meeting.
Okay, let me put the phone down and I'll open the door.
Thank you, Ken.
Alright, thank you.
Let's, let's wait for Ken to come back on and then, so he can hear.
How can he stop chasing the nurses and then he could talk?
Alright, are you back on, Ken?
Yeah, the door is open.
Okay, great. Now, we will proceed with, uh, Mr. Wardlaw.
Hello, thank you. Uh, my name's Scott Wardlaw and, and I want to say, uh, that, you know, I know some of you, like you personally. However, you gotta know that by, including Ken out there in the ether somewhere, uh, you gotta know that by scheduling a closed-door session at four P M. on a Friday, Valentine's Day yet, when many folks have other plans, it gives the appearance at least that you really don't welcome public input and discussion, involvement on this topic. Um, I'm not sure what the rush is. And I, as far as I know, there hasn't been any public discussion. It's all been behind closed doors. Uh, that's unsettling to me as a voter, um, and as a, a, a person that lives in the school district and cares about the school district. Uh, that's why I've been involved for many years in the school district. I care. I want to know what's so difficult about a publicized open meeting on, say, a Monday at the regular hour at seven, when more people could probably attend. It just plain looks bad and it makes one raise an eyebrow about motives. I'd like to know, has our school district suffered or has there been improvement with Chelsea? I think it can be asserted that the district has improved in many areas and all indicators back that up. Um, if there are reasons for Chelsea dismissal that are so egregious that we need to do it now, I think these reasons should be aired in a public discussion, which has not happened as yet. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Sack.
Um, good afternoon. I'm at a loss for words. I will say that I know what this is probably about because someone put it on Facebook. Now, I'm not friends with that person, but someone told me about it. So, it might not be accurate, but if you look at the agenda and you hear what I heard, then you would know that it's probably accurate, what I was told. I am very opposed to this. I agree with everything that Scott said. I think that right now, the four of you and Ken, who I can't, he's on the phone, are not, I hear about transparency, transparency, and I feel like you guys are not being transparent and that you are not listening to the parents. I'm not sure who you're listening to, but we were here, many of us and some more were here on Wednesday night voicing our opinions. We thought you were extending Chelsea's contract and I find it appalling and very upsetting and very distrustful and it puts, for me, your integrity is, you really don't have any. So, it, it doesn't look good and you guys kind of look like bullies. So, I am just going to ask you, I asked you to be fair, not to make any rash decisions and to show some integrity. And I feel like none of that was, you didn't listen to the parents. And another thing is, someone else who was in the audience at the board meeting, or actually, they either left the audience or they came back and they made the comment and said, "I didn't want to listen to stupid people talk." So, how do the parents feel when there's district employees, not from the district office, calling parents stupid, saying they don't want to listen to them? So, I leave you with this. Please, don't do this.
Next, I have, uh, Sikoro Sangavala.
My name is Sikoro Sangavala. I am the Director of Special Education in Temple City Unified and I am here to speak and support Chelsea. I didn't get a chance to do it Wednesday, so I'm glad I'm doing it now. I would like to share with you that in my interactions with Chelsea throughout the years, in my different responsibilities as a school psychologist, then as a program specialist, and now as a director of the special education program, she has always expressed caring concern for every person who is part of Temple City Unified. Chelsea has also shown to be deeply invested in the academic growth of our students and the professional excellence of every staff member, me included. Thank you. From the installation of technology in our classrooms across great levels to the implementation of new programs such as transition kindergarten, her courage and integrity are evident. I trust that your decision, made today or later, will be consistent with the integrity and compassion that are essential to a district's character. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Trish O'Brien.
Um, thank you for listening to us. We really, really do appreciate it and we hope that you really are listening. Um, I too express Scott's worried that, undisguised that this meeting was called on a holiday when all our kids are out and all of our school district personnel are home at four o'clock when lots of parents are still at work. Had I not gone on the website to hear about this special meeting, I wouldn't have even known about it. I'm here again to speak on behalf of Chelsea. I know that you're all trying to make a difficult decision and I feel really bad for all of you. I've spoken with people in the district and I've asked, I was asked to mention on behalf of a principal that the principals in the district have never been asked by the board their opinions of Chelsea. The principals in the district are the ones that deal day-to-day with the students, parents, and also with Chelsea. They are not comfortable speaking at a meeting because of the way things have been handled in the past. As previously mentioned, Chelsea's review last year was great, so if there's something that she has done to warrant this, I ask again for you to enlighten us as parents so that we have the bigger picture of the reason you want to remove her from her position. Why pay her contract out, pay someone to step in for her in the interim, and also pay to look for somebody new? Seems like money that could go to other things like teachers, retirement needs, or the needs of the school sites. I ask that you please think long and hard, talk to people, parents, personnel, and teachers before you make a decision that will affect a lot of people. The decisions are not to renew her contract. It was made by the prior school board, of which two members are no longer present. Again, I'm sure that there are things that we do not see nor know about, but I feel, as others do, that this is a very difficult decision that is being made harshly. Chelsea's gone over and above helping the school district. She's at all the school sites, all the school functions. She makes herself available to all the teachers and personnel. If there's an issue or a problem, it should have been raised to her. She stands on the street corner waving a sign for Measure S. She goes over and above and does so much for this district. Think about all the good she's done. Give her some compassion. If you don't renew her contract, that's one thing, but let her finish out her contract till June. Give her that at least.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl White.
I always get so nervous talking, especially when something's so important to everybody on both sides. And unfortunately, I, I don't get privileged to know the other side, but I, I have privilege of one thing that I have been doing for you and the other side is, is praying. And, and I believe in the power of prayer and I know this is, we're not supposed to mention this kind of stuff, but tough luck.
Girl, say it.
I, um... I know we do things wrong and, and I do know one thing. If there's injustice, if it would happen to you, Mr. Ridley, that something would happen and you would ask the parents, "Hey, this is happening," we would ride, rally together and fight for you and speak behalf of you, all of you, if there was. I teach my children that we have to extend a certain amount of grace to help someone if there's a problem. If Chelsea did something, let's, let's fix it. She's a grown-up. Set her down, lay out the cards, tell her what's going on, and, and let's stop the, all the BS. She can handle it. You guys can handle it. Give her a chance to fix it instead of wasting all the money that's going to take to cut her contract short or look for a new one. Now, if it's a huge thing, well, she has accountability and, and it needs to be taken care of. I love you, Chelsea. So, but this is what justice is. You all stood for the flag. All said the pledge of allegiance, but did you really hear what you were pledging? Because I, I do and, and I do because my husband's family arrived here in sixteen seventy-two. They were part of the fight, I have it documented, to make America, and that's not how they based America. They based America on, on good judgment and they gave grace. And, and then when the grace, they couldn't, um, the person went against the grace and continued to do wrong, then they handled things. So, we need to come back to what was founded in our country and, and start practicing and stop this political things that's going on. And, and we have enough with our government. This is a town that you, I know, okay, everybody's raising their children. Bob, I know very well, I rallied for you. I, when you ran for board, I was talking, they were at Ember, everybody was doing it. I was telling parents, "I, I did for you what I'm doing for Chelsea because I believed in you." I believed that you were going to do the right things for everything, teachers, children, everything. Vincent, I know you're hard too, and the same thing. Um, you other two are new, so I'm sorry for me, but I just want you to remember that, remember grace. That, and we all have to do that. What are we teaching our children? To be out there and be bullies? To go after everyone like dogs and no grace? That's what my children deal with, with kids every day, and I'm tired of the drama. I'm tired of hearing that. We need to set an example and this is the big, where the big dogs run. And, and let's do that. So, I, I know your decision's going to be your decision and I am praying I'm the most merciful and graceful one. And, and I'm, I'm really hoping and, and I believe everything that all my peers have said has value, great value. And I, and I'm, and also, it's funny that Sikoro... Was, um, my Spanish, hey, I'm Mexican. I can't even talk Spanish, okay? Um, I had special ed teachers that came up to me to tell me because they knew I was active and everything to let me, not special ed teachers, parents, about Chelsea. And then prior, I didn't know about the meeting, but someone, an employee, told me about it to come. So, there's other, there's, it goes both ways. There's people here afraid to talk against and there's people afraid to talk pro of employees. That's not good. And as a parent, it's up to you guys. You can change it. You have the power to make the impact. And make, and that's what I told the parents for Measure S. You have the impact of, to set this generation blessing to say, "Hey, we're standing up. We're going to do this." And they're going to look back at this school and know they had a part of paying and developing all this new stuff for these kids in the future. You have the same thing. You have this impact, a huge one, that will go across the boards and it will be told to children. And the kids will find out what happens. Everyone talks. What, is it going to be bad gossip or is it going to be the truth? So, think about, I know this is a heavy load. You have a lot. We know her track record. You don't get a, a great performance unless everyone was lying on the board last year. I mean, there's only a short amount of time it's been. And, and as parents want to know, how can you go from A to Z so fast? So, um, think and think hard. I know you guys will. And thank you for talking. Or thank you. I'm sorry. Bye. Yes, don't forget my pizza.
Thank you. Next, we have Donna Georgina.
Uh, Gina Epprichow is here with me also. We're, um, unprepared, so she wanted to come up here with me. Um, I have two things I wanted to mention. First of all, I'm a little unsettled by the calling of this meeting today at four o'clock on a holiday, um, when the kids aren't in school and when a lot of parents are at work. I just, by pure accident, found out about the meeting. I saw something on Facebook. I just happened to be looking at my Facebook page. Otherwise, I would not have known about it. And I don't think that was a good decision to call this meeting today at this time when it, it could have been at another time if people could have been given more notice. Especially after Wednesday night's meeting really wasn't that efficient of a meeting and perhaps this could have been dealt with Wednesday night. But, um, it really does appear that our input isn't that valued when a meeting is called like this at the last minute. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was that, um, I worked with Chelsea on Measure S. very closely. Um, I saw her under some very stressful circumstances. I saw people being not very nice to her. Um, and she never once cracked. She was always professional, always kind, always nice to people and very respectful and professional to people. So, I find it really hard to understand why, as a board, as a district, we would not treat her that way. If, it's meant to be and her contract is not going to be renewed, that's one thing, but I really don't see any reason to not treat her respectfully and professionally the way she has treated everybody in this community. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Gina Epprichow. I have served on the PTA board since my children have been in kindergarten and I currently have a sophomore and a first-year graduate, uh, college student. I came here today to support Chelsea. She has been a very good friend. Friends are important as well as professional friends, but I'm here to talk other than the ki- the kind of job she's done as a superintendent. And so therefore, I thought long and hard, what am I going to say? But I did send Chelsea an email and I think I'll just read that because that's my true feelings. Sorry, I'm... Okay. "Hi, Chelsea. Hope you are doing well. I wanted to apologize for not being at the board meeting tonight. I couldn't leave home because my math's, my son's math tutor came over and brought her three-year-old daughter with her and I was the babysitter. I just want to let you know how much I appreciate you and what you have done for the district. Everyone has an opinion and mine is that you have been an open-minded superintendent with a listening ear. You have been so supportive of PTA and the activities and events we plan. As a matter of fact, you have attended several of our events. That says a lot, that you care and we matter. You have not only been our superintendent, but a friend as well. You are easy to talk to and are caring. Those are my kind of traits. Chelsea, please know that you have my support and admiration, which she always will. And by the way, I was her coordinator-partner, which we will never forget, for Measure S. Thank you, Chelsea."
Thank you. Miss Epprichow, before you leave, can you fill out one of these forms?
Oh, I do need my separate one.
Great, yes, I do. Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Aiden Rudd.
Good afternoon. Um, after last Wednesday, I was really encouraged and actually looked forward to talking to you because I probably have more to say than could be said in three minutes. Um, but I want to let you know that I'm a loyal person. I'm loyal to my wife, I'm loyal to my boss, Chelsea, I'm loyal to my school, my teacher, and I'm loyal to your school board. But I feel I owe it to the school board to make some observations and share some of my experience. So, it's when I was called for this, when Julio called me for this job, I had two other job offers and was working as a principal already waiting for a contract. Temple City was my first choice. It was my first choice of everywhere I had applied. I mean, I was so grateful I didn't get another job before that. Overall, this is a great district made up of excellent people, from the school board to the, to the district office, to the principals, to the teachers, and great kids and, and very involved, wonderful parents. Much the reason I was attracted to Temple City was Chelsea's message on the website. She had the fist philosophy on her page and I had used it in a previous school and felt was a perfect fit for how schools should feel. And I noticed, um, last Wednesday, that she has overwhelming support from the PTA and this can be troublesome with your decision. I heard about things not being in repair, things like that. I want to tell you, my previous school was built in nineteen fifty-seven and my mom was the vice president of the PTA the year it opened. I wasn't born yet, but there was a, there was a swale at that school that was filled with water forever for, from that day. It was finally fixed in about two thousand and four while I was principal, but it was due to a school bomb that was passed. And they were able to repair that and, and the technologies of, of construction today is amazing, the things they can do. They, when they poured their concrete, they used, um, satellite technology and, and were able to, to pour concrete so there was not any puddles anywhere. When it rained, they could pour down rain, within five minutes, the place would just, you didn't see water anywhere. The technologies for the, that are in place, you go, we have such a great school district. You have no idea how wonderful it's going to be when all that is done because I lived through it once and it changes the world. Because there's a lot of energy on this, on this, um, this, what's happening now, I've been involved in that before. I was, I was appointed, uh, chairman of the planning commission in Glendora. We just elected, elected a new city council and I, that was, they, they appointed me that because I had helped them all. Um, I've retired from politics and, um, but, but they fired the city manager. And there was a lot of energy on both sides of that and they had a lot of, they had a lot of people's ear that, that that's the right thing to do. He's not helping us. He's not doing anything. But when they fired the city manager, what ensued divided the city for about ten years. Literally, people were not showing up to city events, like fifty percent of the people were showing up. It, it, that's... That's what I'm most concerned about. We can't run our schools with such a division. I, I really hope you use your wisdom and cut to some kind of a compromise that neither side may like, but both sides will accept without taking steps that could be more divisive. The state things are, are in now for your own sake. I really would advise you to make a decision that you need to be prepared to defend with reportable objective evidence. Um, because just the way things are today and it's unfortunate, you might have to. So, um, thank you for your time and thank you for listening and Chelsea, you have my support.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Suzie Masia.
For anybody that really, really knows me, I want to just cut to the chase and ask the question, why? We're all here to support her? Why? Because everybody wants to know, why are they doing it? Why are they doing it? Is it, did she touch a child wrong? Did she not show up to work? Because I've seen her at everything. Can we ask why? Because everybody's at, you know, we want to know why. What, what did she do so wrong that she's going to leave? Why? Can you not, can you not tell us? Can you not tell us why?
Unfortunately, at this time, we can't, we can't.
Because we're all fighting so hard. I mean, I left work early to go and ask my boss. I need to be here because I, I, I want to know why. Did she, did she molest a child? That, that would be grounds for, for termination. Did she, did she not show up to work and not do her job? Why? Why? Because she has been so supportive. Everything she does, everything I've heard. I've seen her at things. And I'm pretty outgoing. I would cut someone out like that, but you know what? If you knew me, you would know. I ask why? Little bit, just a little. Is it that bad? Did she do something so bad that it can't be fixed? Is it that bad where, you know, you, you, you fall down, you pick yourself up, you brush yourself off and you keep going? That's, that's what life is about. You make mistakes. I know she made a mistake. I don't even know if you guys, if it's a different... We, we don't know. We just want to know why. Though, everybody wants to know why. Because no one knows. We're, we're talking about how much we love her, how much support she's giving us. So, I ask you, why? We, we, we voted for her. Now, our votes are going to go in the trash? And I, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to be the next vote. I, I voted for Chelsea. You're hearing all the good things. Didn't even know her. And now that I've got to know her, I'm like, dang it, I'm so glad I voted for her. I, I know the mayor. I know Mr. Chavez. I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm like their little daughter that they just say they can't handle sometimes. But, I make myself, I've grown in Temple City my whole life, my whole entire life. And I've never seen a superintendent with so much pizzazz, so much love for the city that she works in. So, why? I, I, I can't, I can't, I can't leave here until I know why. I have to know why. I think everybody wants to know why. I know it's harsh. I know it's mean. I'm not trying to be that way because if you knew me, you would love the heck out of me. Because I'm funnier in hell. But I want to know why. Can anybody just say, oh, why?
I can only say that we cannot say anything at this time.
Can, when can we find out? Because when you guys elect a new superintendent, I'm going to ask him, or if that even happens, because maybe it won't, maybe it won't. Maybe you guys will really think really hard and strong, be like, you know, you know, we, she can, you know, we can, you know. I don't know if even the decision is being, I know, I know, I know, I'm just, I want to know why.
Again, I cannot, I cannot answer that question for you. And I thank everyone who've come today to speak on behalf of Chelsea and to speak on this subject. But at this time, you know, we can't make any public comments. The law prohibits such things, so.
When will we know? Will we ever know? So we can, so we can, maybe if you don't, if you don't, if you don't let her go, even to renew her contract, I'm hoping they can renew her contract for, you know, for the sake of everybody's. But what I'm saying is, if you do happen to, you know, let her go, will we know why? So we can let the other superintendent, don't do this. Especially if we like them. Don't do this, let's...
Thank you very much. You know, again, the law requires that all personnel decisions are made in closed session. And the law prohibits any board member now sitting or previously sitting board member from disclosing any information or any discussion that are held in closed session. So, you know, I can't give you a reason. It's just, bless the law.
No, we never will know. Because that would break the law. I mean, I, because I'm sure it's going to get sneaked out or something's going to have, something's going to happen. It's going to be rumors, rumors, rumors. That's why I ask you as the board, anything, anything.
If I could just say, and I want to thank you for what you're saying. And this is public comment and we're valuing everything you say. We're here to listen to you. And there's not a place on our agenda today for us to make comments. And that's what President Tia is referring to.
Think is there going to be another secret? Is there going to be another secret meeting to where we have to find out like Facebook?
All right, I think...
I'm not trying to attack you guys, I just, I just want to keep...
I understand that, but I think, you know, we have to move on now. So thank you for coming out and speaking. And thank you again, everyone, for coming out and speaking. And we will take everything into consideration. Now, at this time, can I get a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss item five on the agenda?
I'll make that motion. Seconded.
A motion by Member Palmer, seconded by Member Ridley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So five aye. We're now adjourned to closed session. Hi, good evening. Can I get a motion to reconvene to open session, please?
I'll make that motion. Seconded.
A motion by Member Bell, seconded by Member Ridley. And the record reflect that Mr. Novemburg is not available by phone. We tried twice. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Vote to reconvene, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four aye. Okay, now, announcement of actions taken in closed session. I'd like to announce that the board took no action in closed session. This was the first time that all five members were able to meet and discuss this very important topic. Out of respect for those who spoke tonight and those who were not able to attend, the board will place this closed session matter on the agenda for the next regularly scheduled board meeting set for February 26, 2014. Thank you. Can I ask, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion by Member Ridley, seconded by Member Bell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's four aye. You are adjourned. And I does not know. But, but, you know, without disclosing any conversation I had, if you want to brief this, again, I invite you to brief it, send it to me, to my attention, and I will forward it to our legal counsel and maybe we can...
Well, I'm going to go from the state to brief it.
I'm sorry.
How about if I get a lawyer from the state to brief it?
You can get any lawyer you like, sir. I can't tell you who to get and who not to get.
Good, good. This is, the language is very clear.
Sure. And I'm not, I'm not going, I don't argue with you. I'm not going to argue with you. Because I don't know, if you want to brief it, you brief it and we'll redo it.
You don't know what all of the laws of the state of California mean.
Don't put words in my mouth, sir.
Okay.
Okay, don't put words in my mouth. Let's not go there.